Welcome to the Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Regular meeting scheduled for tonight, Monday, April 24th. First on the agenda, we have some housekeeping items to attend to. I'm going to need a motion to approve bills for $275 to the Community Advocate for the April 24th legal notice and $44.48 to WB Mason for office supplies. Can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve both of those bills.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes from the March 27, 2023 meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 27, 2023.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, we're going to proceed on to the public hearings for 6:30. We do have a four-member board this evening. We had a last-minute, Peter Mulcahy had a work issue that came up at the last minute. So technically, if you have a hearing that's going to be in front of us, you have the right to ask for a continuance till next meeting, which is a month away, or you can proceed forward with a four-member board. So I just want everyone to know that ahead of time. So as we call you up, we can talk further if you have questions. All right. All right, so our first 6:30 meeting, this is to hear the appeal of 9 Walcott Road, Section B-2, Habibullah Amani. This is for a variance, I'm sorry, I'm reading off the wrong, thank you for one second. This is for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7B, Table 2, to construct an addition and deck with a non-conforming side yard setback on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to expand a non-conforming structure upon property located at 9 Walcott Road in the Residence B-2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 354000. Please step forward and have a seat. And welcome back. You look familiar?
Yeah.
All right. So if you could state your name for the record, please, and let us know why you're in front of us and what you'd like to do.
My name is Habibullah Amani. And I think last year we tried to get the permit for, I have two sons disabled and we don't have access to the home, and we want to do the addition with the ramp from the front of house. We involved with some problem about wetland, and it's got months and months till, you know, we survive and we got, you know, they move to next, and we want to start now.
Okay. Chris, could you give us some backstory here?
Yep. So this is an application that was before the board last year and did receive approval. The work has not been commenced, and as part of Massachusetts General Law, the rights granted by the variance do expire after one year. The special permits are still in effect. The request here is to reestablish the rights of the variance that were previously approved. And, yeah, and that's primarily it. It's primarily related to the setbacks. We did include the special permit as well for the expansion of the use, the non-conforming use as well. So that would then grant that special permit for another two years and variance for one year. The building permit has already been applied for, which is how this process started, so I fully expect that the applicant would move forward with this within that one-year timeframe.
Okay. Questions from the board? Ann?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I don't have any questions either.
Kevin?
No questions at this time.
And welcome to our new board member, David, by the way. Should have done that in the very beginning. So I just want to be clear, you were in front of us, I think it was 18 months ago?
Yeah.
And we approved all of the special permits and the variance that was in front of us at that time, and the building permit has already been, it's in front of the building department at this point? Okay. All right. I have no further questions? Any edification?
So just finally, so in the comment letter that was provided, I do have three minor conditions that I asked the board to consider, primarily related to the customary home occupation use. That's related to the special permits that were previously granted. This just reiterates in the variance approval if the board leans that way. This will just reiterate those conditions within the variance as well.
Okay.
I do have a question for Chris.
Yes.
So Chris, the first paragraph, you'd like the applicant to provide a letter from the Health Department before the issuance of a building permit? Are you suggesting that we should condition something that should be a condition of the variance or the special permit, or that's just some advice?
So that would be, I would request that the board place that as a condition in the decision, that prior to the building permit being issued, the residential kitchen license from the Board of Health be provided to establish that use.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on the board? Good. Okay, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I move to, does the board feel they're confident in making a decision? Okay. Let's move forward, and can I get a move, a motion, please?
Sure. I would make a motion that the board approve a variance pursuant to section-
Yeah, to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7B, Table 2, to construct an addition and deck with a non-conforming side yard setback on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling located at 9 Walcott Road, as well as a motion to approve a special permit pursuant to Shrewsbury bylaw, zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to expand a non-conforming structure at 9 Walcott Road, subject to the conditions, shall I read them out?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think so. Okay.
The proposed conditions would be that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide a letter from the Health Department confirming issuance of a residential kitchen license from the Board of Health, and a copy of such license shall be provided to the building inspector. That's condition number one. Condition number two is, in accordance with Section 6, Table 1, footnote 2 of the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, the profession or customary home occupation shall be conducted by a resident of the premises, not more than two persons, other than residents of the premises may be regularly employed in connection with such use. And the third condition would be that condition one of the decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals, recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, Book 67086, page 167, remains in effect and is hereby incorporated as a condition of this decision. That would be the motion.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
You want to do that? Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, to hear the appeal of Lakeway Realty LLC, 48 Harrington Ave., Shrewsbury, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming two-family structure on a lot with non-conforming frontage upon property located at 18 Edgewater Avenue in the Residence B-2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 000400. Welcome, and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening to the Chair and members of the board. My name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney here representing Lakeway, the applicant, Lakeway Realty LLC, here with Tom Parkett, who is a principal of the manager of Lakeway, and Barbara Parkett, who's the boss. This is a request which is very familiar to all of you. It's to deal with an existing duplex on the parcel, and what is proposed is to demolish the existing, rather aged duplex, and to build new. I do have some, a sketch of elevations, which would tell you substantially what it would look like, if I can approach.
Sure.
Mind sharing?
Sure. Not at all.
And you can see that on this, on this sketch, you'll see the plainfield is on one side and Edgewater on the other. This particular rebuild would involve driveways going on to separate roadways instead of all going out onto Edgewater. So it's very simply a replacement of a duplex with a duplex, only a much nicer one and a better one, better for the neighborhood. I would suggest to you that it is in keeping with the neighborhood, it's in keeping with the use of the parcel at present, would involve no nuisance whatsoever. It's still a residential use, it's still a two-family, and I would ask you to so approve. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions, Ann?
I don't have any questions.
Kevin?
None. It seems pretty straightforward. Setbacks are all met, so I don't see any issues with it.
David?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
We've actually improved the setbacks.
Right.
With the rebuilding. I forgot to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like-
We noted that.
Yeah, thank you.
And it is a lovely, lovely building, and the driveway, one will be on plainfield, one will be on Edgewater.
That's correct.
So a condition of this would be the alignment of the addresses, because it's going to produce a new address.
Yeah, it would require that anyway. The building department will require that as a matter of course. Whenever something, a new structure like this goes in, before she allows a building permit, you go to the assessors, you get a number from the assessor for each address. So that's a standard part of the process now.
Right.
Right, Chris?
Yes. Okay. Chris, any further comments?
Attorney Richard Ricker has always summed it up very succinctly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, be that as it may, might I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the petition for special permit, subject pursuant to Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming two-family structure on a lot with non-conforming frontage at 18 Edgewater Avenue, subject to the condition, which would be, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall meet with the building inspector, assessor, and fire department to assign an appropriate address and unit numbers for the purposes of permitting emergency response and delivery of mail.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next, 6:30 hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Andre Casas, 53, North Street, Shrewsbury, for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7B, Table 2, to construct a garage, seven and a half feet from the easterly side property line upon property located at 53 North Street in the Residence B-1 district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 11, Plot 082000. And might I ask you to state your name for the record?
Sure. Andre Casas, 53 North Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tell us a little bit about what you have planned.
So I'd like to build a garage. Basically, it's an extension of my garage. It's not adding to my garage, I'm making my garage longer. Presently, I'm not sure if you have, I submitted a plot plan with the proposed addition on it, I'm not sure if you guys, so it's presently, he, the engineer, has my existing garage laid out the length of, the depth of my existing house, but it actually isn't, it's only 14 feet deep. It's inside a foundation, the inside of foundation is 11 feet, and it's only 14 feet from the inside of the garage door to my stairs entering into the mudroom. It's usable for a very small car, but, you know, if a couple of bikes, and you can't put anything in there. And basically, I want to extend my garage. Right now, I have pavement where I'm putting my garage, so I park exactly where I'm going to add my garage. And I'll be accessing my garage from the side, not from the, not a front view, from the side, side view, so, and I'll be keeping my garage, it'll be, you know, for storage and some, and other stuff, and it'll be, and the reason why it's, just to explain why it's 29 feet wide, in the front, where the garage doors will be, it's 26, but the entire length of this is 29, is because to the left of my existing garage is my dining room, and I don't want to block out the sun. My house faces too south, and I don't want to block out the sun, I want still to have some sun to enter into my dining room. And that's pretty much it. The seven and a half feet, I just want to make it clear, it's not the entire 29 feet that's entering into the, into the, it's basically, I wish I had the engineer give you a square foot, a total square foot, which I'm entering into my setback. If I had to estimate it, and it's a complete guess, I would say about five square feet, I'm probably into my 10-foot setback. So I'm here to asking for a variance, I think, to be able to construct this.
Thank you for all that explanation. That's very, very helpful. Board members, Ann?
Just one question. So it's a single family, or it's a single car garage now, is it going to be two bays, or is it just?
The new?
Yeah, the new one.
Yes, it's going to be, so it's, it'd be 26 feet wide, so it's going to have two garage doors, yes.
Great, and it'll just come out a little bit closer to the street in addition to-
Oh, it's going to come out 29, I'm coming 29 feet, but I'm within my setback in the front.
Oh, sure.
It's my side setback, my existing, I'm way, you know, I have a lot of-
Right, I know the house is set way, way-
Yes.
Away from the street, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin?
No, I don't seem to have a problem with it. I mean, where you do go over the line there, it's basically an access drive to two houses that are behind you.
Thank you, yes.
You've already got driveway there, and if I'm not mistaken, you're probably going to be tearing up what driveway is there, so you're even pulling further back than what you're coming over the line, so I have no issue with it.
Okay, great. David?
Had you given any consideration to locating the garage in any other part of your plot?
Sure. So it would, it would be a completely different type of construction at this point, because my entry point to the house right now is there, that's where my mudroom is. On the left side, that's where my bedrooms are. It doesn't make any sense for me, of course, I can always put it on the left side. I would love to put it on the other side, it would make my house look better. I wouldn't be blocking any light, I would, you know, you know, the house would look much better on the existing lot, but it doesn't, from a construction point of view, I would have to reframe, reconstruct my entire house, because I'd be entering into my bedrooms. And it doesn't make any sense at that point.
Was there, was there any design consideration to having the, that back line that does enter the setback at a separate angle to prevent it from entering the setback? Instead of making it a rectangle, have it be trapezoidal?
So, and one of the things, one of the letters that I got from you guys, I guess you guys also care about aesthetics and what, so it, I mean, from a construction point of view, and I apologize for going back, that's what I do, I frame houses for living, and it's, it just doesn't make any sense to put a, if it was a, if the house was longer, and maybe then you could have probably put a, an angle on it, and still, but this is going to be 29 feet, I'd be blocking my house. I know it's not much to be within my setback, you know, so I gain that couple of feet that I'm, two and a half, two and a half feet that I'm going into my setback, but it'd be an odd angle, the roof wouldn't work at all, and it'd be, at least to me, it would be extremely visible, and I couldn't, I couldn't live with that, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all the explaining, and I can imagine where if you, to David's point, turned it, it's also going to change the look of the house-
Oh, absolutely.
-in such a way that I'm not sure aesthetically that's going to work, and I, and it would also block the view of the existing dining room, I assume?
Yeah, further than it already is.
Right.
I mean, that's-
Yeah, yep, okay.
Yes.
All right. I actually thought the same, could you put it on the other side of the house and make it, but I can imagine that that's going to-
It would have to be detached garage.
Right.
And it just doesn't make any sense, you know, to, you know, you're putting a garage so you can come in and park and go into your house. If you're in a detached garage, you know, it's, and it doesn't fit in the neighborhood, there's really, this, this would be more idea, although honestly, for us as a family, we want to do this to gain the space, but we're against the idea to block the house. We like our house the way it is, it's long, and it's, you know, it's, and this is actually, but we need the garage space. So it's one, it's one of two options, either do this, or do a completely separate garage way back in the left corner, because to have, to have a detached garage close to the house, it's not going to, it wouldn't look good. It would have to be either far away, that looks like a barn, but I don't want to, I don't want some, I want to be able to use it and be able to, for me and my wife and my kids someday to use it, so.
Yep, understood. Chris, I'm at questions?
No, the two main comments that I had in the comment letter, which the board has kind of already discussed, was the location of the garage doors, making sure that those are pointing, which the layout kind of presumes, but there's the L shape of the driveway, having those facing the existing pavement, so that there's not additional driveway needing to be paved. But the other question that I kind of left out there was that it does look like there's additional pavement that is no longer going to be needed to access this, and I just wasn't sure if that was to remain, or-
It's something I've been actually thinking about. I didn't see that until I received this. He, he left it on there. I think he just, I don't think, I have plenty of pavement, I have pavement that runs on the left side of my house, and I don't think I need it, it would be, because I'm going to excavate, I'm going to have to go, you know, five or six feet beyond the existing line, so I don't think I'll be replacing it. Now it would be grass, no, it's not something, because I would have to readjust the entire driveway to be able to access it, so now it wouldn't, it would become out.
Makes sense.
Fresh, yeah.
Thank you.
So it would be even less pavement that we have to worry about.
All right, it's a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Right? Might I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I please get a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the requested variance at 53 North Street pursuant to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7B, Table 2, to construct a garage, seven and a half feet from the easterly side property line. And are we looking for a condition or no?
I had none purported.
Okay, great. So that would be my motion.
Great. Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Oopsie, sorry. All right. Through with the public hearings, on to new business. Chris, can you give us some background on the determination of insubstantial changes to the Point at Hill Farms?
Yeah, and I, I do note that the appellant is present, or the project proponent is present, but the request before the board tonight is a discussion and vote on a request for determination of insubstantial changes for the Point at Hills Farm comprehensive permit at 526 Hartford Turnpike. They're requesting a number of, you know, minor modifications primarily related to, you know, cleaning up the previous special permit to include the conditions, the waivers for the bicycle sheds, as well as including wind developments subsidiaries on the comprehensive permit. But if it's the board's wish, I would, you know, the applicant can probably give a presentation as well.
May I get the applicant to step forward? Welcome back.
Thank you very much. How are you guys doing tonight?
We're great, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
And you are aware it's a four-member board?
Yes.
Great.
So just with me tonight, I have John Smolak, our attorney, Smolak &amp; Vaughn, Liz Clark with Beals &amp; Thomas, our civil engineer, and Fran Zaretti with Urban Smart Growth, the seller of the, or the applicant, the co-applicant on the comprehensive permit, and seller, a representative for the seller. So as Chris mentioned, we've worked with, and Raimi Schneider with Wind Development, sorry about that.
Thank you, Raimi.
We've worked with Tom Staff, and we're here tonight in anticipation of closing and financing and starting construction. So we're requesting a minor modification to add our two win-owned entities to the comprehensive permit, so that once we close on the land, the seller will be removed from the comprehensive permit, and once we get the final award letters from the Department of Housing, the comprehensive permit will be transferred to those win entities, single-purpose entities for the development. The second one is a cleanup of one paragraph that I think just needs some renumbering in the comprehensive permit. And then the third item that we're here before you tonight is really just updating the comp permit to reflect the approved plans, which show the bicycle sheds, and it's just a dimensional waiver request that wasn't listed in December, but is consistent with the approved plan, approved plan that the ZBA has already seen and the peer reviewer has already reviewed. And with that, I can turn it back to the board if there's any questions, or John, Liz, if I missed anything?
Yes, for the record, John Smolak, sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather, a little cold here, but one additional item is the fact that the, the award letters that were included in the, the application and the request also is requesting a transfer of the subsidy to DHCD, and that's reflected in the award letters too, which is a routine sort of situation that occurs.
Chris, anything further before we?
I did forget to mention that I did have Tom Counsel review this, and they found this to be in line with an insubstantial change, but it is ultimately a determination for the board to make.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. Ann, questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, that's pretty clear.
Okay.
Agreed, everything seems pretty clear.
David?
Same here.
I agree. Thank you for your clarity and your thoughtfulness, and for working through the process for as long as you have, we appreciate that. So Fran's probably happy back there.
We will-
That's a smile.
Seven years.
All right.
We're excited.
Great. Might I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the request for determination of insubstantial changes for the Point at Hill Farms comprehensive permit regarding 526 Hartford Turnpike.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome, Fran. Seven long years.
Yeah.
Patience is a virtue. Okay. I do want to welcome, as a next piece of business, David Moore to our board. David, thank you for throwing out your interest, and congratulations on your appointment. I also would want to say, there was a lot of people that had expressed an interest in being a member of the zoning board, and that was a great thing. We've had many years where nobody wanted to be on the zoning board, so maybe that reflects the great work that we're doing, or maybe not. Maybe they're looking to take our jobs, which might be fine. So with that being said, we have sort of a realignment of some of the positions, Lisa- Lisa Cosette was formerly our vice chair. She's no longer with us, so I would ask for a motion to appoint a member to the vice chair position.
Gladly, I'll make a motion to vote and approve a new vice chair for the Shrewsbury zoning board.
And who might that be?
That would be Ann Fratello.
Okay. Ann, can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved, welcome, Ann, to your new, new position.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. All right, and then last up is the update and proposed zoning bylaw changes, Chris?
Thank you. So we have, we have four zoning bylaw changes that will be before the board, the planning board, on May fourth. Two of those are continued, so I'll run through them fairly quickly. If you've been following along with finance committee and, and planning board, you know, have made a number of presentations on them. So Article fifty-one is primarily to remove from the use table footnote twenty-six, which limits the accessory non-retail, non-gasoline sales square footage limitation. So currently, businesses that co-locate with a gas station are limited to three thousand square feet. We see this as, you know, detrimental to modern gas stations, which typically have a larger retail component or similar co-located uses such as a car wash. We have added proposals in the, in the past that have, you know, struggled to meet that threshold and operate successfully. Typically, the, the non-gasoline sales is the primary economic driver for the site, and the gasoline sales is, is really just to drive traffic and to attract business to the site, and it's not the primary business use. Also of note in that, this would be in the, it, it is not a restriction in the commercial business districts, it's only in the industrial districts, which we view as somewhat more restrictive use. So to have that additional restriction that is not in a less restrictive zone, doesn't make much sense to us. So I think this is a, a modernization slightly of our gas station zoning. Moving on to Article fifty-two, this is to establish an adult day health use. This is looking at primarily like nursing home facilities, but rather than stay-in, this would be a, a day use that people could come to receive care, but also to relax and enjoy, whether it's physical therapy, or, you know, bocce, or whatever other activities allows them to essentially come and have those nursing care attached to, you know, recreational uses for that, that age group. We see this, we've had some interest of businesses proposing this, and so we see this as a useful use to define. Currently, the regulatory path to open such a, a business in Shrewsbury is a little bit unclear. This would then promote that as, as a use and defines the districts where we want to see that type of use. So we see that as a benefit to attracting that, that type of business, which is an alternative to the, the stay-in nursing home facilities. Article fifty-three is for commercial equipment rental on the Route twenty overlay. So this is primarily looking at forklifts and other types of, you know, commercial equipment that would be rented. This is promoting that business type, again, establishing that as a use that is permitted in that Route twenty overlay district. And then finally, Article fifty-four is for battery energy storage. This modifies what is our existing large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic bylaw, solar bylaw for short, to allow for a location of battery storage facilities. These are primarily what, you know, you may have seen them, look kind of like a, like a shipping container, they are large battery storage facilities. Typically, you know, I say storage container, but they do make them look nice with, you know, kind of the painting and decals on it, but primarily for battery storage. This would allow for that as well as, you know, the Tesla, Tesla power walls in, in, in homes. This better defines that use. It's an emerging technology, it makes sense to take advantage of it. It aligns with our sustainability goals by providing battery energy storage, and we see this as a benefit of, again, defining where that can go and defining it as a use that can be located in Shrewsbury.
Any questions or comments about any of this?
Do you know if the fire department's had any say or comment on battery storage?
Yes, so we have been working very closely with the fire department. There is certainly a concern with, you know, the lithium ion batteries that, that could pose a fire hazard. Part of locating them with the large, the, the solar bylaw does require a lot of, you know, setbacks from any residential uses of that nature. And in the proposal, we do reference, there was, I'm not going to remember the, the fire code for the, the reference, but we do reference that it has to, to meet those requirements. We'll continue to track that, and if there's adjustments that are needed to, to better suit fire protection, we'll continue to, to watch that and, and make sure that that is addressed, certainly.
Thank you.
Yep.
For the, for the accessory non-retail gas station, is that being driven by what you see as a desire to expand that capability? Or is, and then secondary to that, is this, was there any consideration to, if we're having an, an expanded commercial type use in an industrial area, is that going to otherwise limit or prohibit industrial growth in, in this, in the town, do you think?
Right, so I think that by having it as co-locating with gas station uses, I think that will primarily attract other, you know, industrial type uses. You're not going to have, you know, primarily commercial uses that, other than car washes and those types that fit with an industrial aesthetic and use type that want to co-locate with a gas station. What we see this as is it kind of modernizes, I, I think we may want to look at, in the future, looking at gas stations and, again, the submergence of alternative fuel sources, do we want to include EV? The way the, the regulations are written, it's, it's very gasoline sales or non-gasoline sales. So we may want to expand that in the future, but as a, a short-term, you know, to allow, you know, what I would call the Cumberland Farms type gas, gas station model, we see this as allowing that in a more germane fashion.
I find it interesting, it just shows how quickly technology is moving when we see this amount of changes to the bylaws. I'm, I'm sure for probably forty years, there were no changes whatsoever. And then it just seems to me that over the last five years, we've seen a lot of acknowledgement of these changes, so it, it must be hard to stay on top of those things. I mean, it's interesting. Each year, there, there's new things and nuances that have to be covered, so the use tables used to be pretty straightforward, but they're not that way anymore. So. All right, Ann, anything?
No, thank you very much for that presentation, I found it very helpful.
Okay, appreciate that. All right. I think we need to get a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.